Welcome to the December 19th, 2023, the last City Council meeting of this calendar year. Let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Here.
Councilmember Rarback?
Here.
Councilmember Reddick?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jimenez?
Here.
Mayor Penrose?
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
May we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Salute.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, we will move on. We will not have the hip housing program presentation this evening. They aren't able to come tonight. They'll be here in January. So we're going to go straight to the 2023 State of the City address. Good evening. I'm Deborah Penrose, Mayor of Half Moon Bay. Thank you for giving me some of your time tonight for the 2023 Half Moon Bay State of the City address. Our theme this year is one of resiliency, and I think you'll agree that this year has been extremely challenging for everyone in our community as we all face two unforeseen catastrophic events. A series of unusually severe storm systems hit the area, resulting in evacuations, damage to buildings, downed trees, road closures, beach and bluff erosion, and loss of internet and phone communication. Thankfully, there were no reported injuries to community members. The storms highlighted the need to shore up our infrastructure. It is not always fun to talk about sewer systems, groundwater, and sewers, but attention to infrastructure is essential if we intend to maintain our beautiful Half Moon Bay. Public Works Director Maz Bozarginia, Assistant City Manager John Doughty, and their teams deserve our thanks for their hard work this past storm season. With the storms, the city and the community worked to prepare for and endure the severe weather. From sandbags to an evacuation point and resource center, to preparing and restoring infrastructure, to clearing drains and repairing roadways, the city did its part, and we thank our exemplary city staff who worked so hard to ensure public safety. Then, the horrific shooting on January 23rd shook our community. And even today, we continue to mourn the senseless loss of life and share in the great sorrow and pain suffered by the loved ones of the victims. These two events would test the resolve and determination of any city. In Half Moon Bay, we can all be proud of the strength and courage displayed by our community in facing, processing, and moving forward through these terrible unfortunate incidents. In fact, that's part of the very definition of resiliency, the ability to adapt to difficult situations. In both instances, our community and the city immediately responded with generosity and compassion. We need to thank our Community Vitality Division, our City Manager Matthew Titister, and each member of our city staff for the 24/7 caring response during this terrible event. Their personal hands-on approach was a demonstration of the humane and loving way that our city staff has shown when such tragedy occurs. These and other efforts were accomplished in partnership with the San Mateo County Executive Mike Calagui, its Department of Emergency Management, the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office, Coastside Fire Protection District, Sewer Authority Mid-Coast Side, CERT volunteers, and many, many more. A special thanks to our Congresswoman Anna Eschew for her personal, on-the-ground commitment to our city during these tragedies. And you, the people throughout the community who came together to support each other through these challenges, caring for one another and helping keep our families safe. After the tragic shooting, sharing our grief was and remains an important part of recovery. Memorial vigils and other gatherings and victim remembrance events helped to bring together and heal the community. The city helped with efforts to obtain housing and other essential services for farmworker households that were displaced by the shooting. ALAS and Coastside Hope established funds, and they, along with many other nonprofits, offered support to the victims. The White House, Governor Newsom, as well as mayors of other cities where shootings have occurred, particularly Monterey Park, helped us with recommendations for useful protocols for establishing the Coastside Victims Fund, which was supported by the San Mateo Credit Union and Mavericks Community Foundation to help families of the victims with some of their long-term financial needs. The cooperation, support, and continual communications we've maintained with San Mateo County during this time has been crucial, along with local, state, and federal elected officials, especially Senator Josh Becker and Assembly Member Mark Berman. None of this would have been possible without my fellow councilmembers: Vice Mayor Joaquín Jiménez, Councilmember Robert Brownstone, Councilmember Harvey Rarback, and Councilmember Debbie Reddick. Through all this, the community continues to respond with funds and support and kindness and caring. In light of these incidents, the resilience and fortitude of our community is particularly admirable and continues to help us all move through recovery. We're leading a community-based effort to develop a memorial and to plan a one-year remembrance ceremony to honor the seven farmworkers who lost their lives. An unfortunate truth emerged after the shootings concerning the deplorable living conditions of farmworkers in our area. And this points to the general need for affordable housing in our community, certainly for farmworkers and also for other vulnerable residents. Overcrowded living conditions and unjust housing practices can be hiding in plain sight, especially in a region like ours with such a high cost of living. This hurts families and children, seniors on fixed incomes, farmworkers, and other special housing needs groups. Much more work is needed to provide housing options along with resources and services so that everyone in our community can thrive. For example, the 52-room coast house provides interim housing with support services on-site for homeless families, couples, and individuals in Half Moon Bay. The city partners with Eric Debodi of Abundant Grace Coastside, which provides job readiness programming for homeless people, including coast side cleanup activities. And our short-term rental ordinance, made possible with the help of the Coastal Commission, allows for those rentals to continue to support visitor accommodations while also providing us with tools for neighborhood preservation and maintaining housing stock in residential areas. The year has included some notable economic recovery and improvement efforts for our community. In partnership with San Mateo County and the Half Moon Bay Coastside Chamber of Commerce, we're creating the Opportunity Center of the Coastside, a service center for job seekers, households, and small businesses that were impacted by the pandemic. Expected to open early 2024, it will offer job and workforce training and assistance in starting and growing a small business. It will include a business incubator to help build businesses that create local jobs. Also part of that post-pandemic economic recovery is our Downtown Streetscapes Master Plan. This is a reimagining of our downtown through an extensive community outreach and engagement process. Its purpose is to create a more attractive, accessible, sustainable, and economically vibrant downtown while preserving and enhancing the existing beloved character of our heritage downtown area. A project that is crucial to our community's well-being is our Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, a draft of which was completed this past August. When finalized, it will be a living document outlining our community's response to the local challenges we face as the impacts from climate change grow more frequent, severe, and urgent. One need only look back to the very recent multi-year historic-level drought, bizarrely followed by an abnormally wet winter, to see that climate change must be addressed at all levels of our society, and it starts locally. The Climate Action and Adaptation Plan will guide our ongoing efforts to fight back. Part of being a resilient, healthy city is doing things together: celebrating, learning, debating, planning, and building community. And to that end, we're so happy to have restarted our NET Community Academy. NET stands for Network Engage Transform. This four-session program engages participants in the operation of city government through fun and informative activities and conversations. It really improves communication between the city and those who live and work here. And we brought back our future leader's Civics Academy for high school students to get firsthand experience in how government and the community work together to provide services and programs that residents depend upon. It includes a mock city council meeting where students play all the roles and make tough, near-real-life funding decisions. Both of these programs highlight the fact that the city's operations and the community itself are both most successful and resilient when we work together. Other great activities that we are happy to bring to the community and to facilitate with our partners include the Summer Zen Music Festival, Concerts in the Park, which is our series of four summer concerts downtown, Make It Main Street on the first Thursday of each month, which is a vast array of musicians, poets, writers, storytellers, artists, films, and more; Community Preparedness Day, providing an opportunity for people to learn more about preparing for earthquakes, floods, fire, and other disasters; the new annual Pride Parade and celebration by Coast Pride; our annual Veterans' Eve ceremony honoring the strength and sacrifices of our veterans, their families, caregivers, and survivors, and our current service members. The resilience of Half Moon Bay has been put to the test this year, and I am proud to say that we've been able to get through some very difficult times by remembering that we are all in this together. We are better as a community when we live, work, and play together. And when bad things happen, we know we can count on one another for support, care, and comfort. This is the essence of a great resilient community. Thank you to all of our community members, partners, and our city staff as we move forward together. And now, we have a special add-on to our State of the City address to offer you a wider perspective on what's going on in Half Moon Bay. First, you'll hear from Kristalin Geith, Chief Executive Optimist from the Half Moon Bay Coastside Chamber of Commerce, and then from Annie Malli from the San Mateo County Library's Half Moon Bay branch. These are both valued partners of the city of Half Moon Bay, and I'm so pleased they are here to share with you their notable accomplishments which bring so much to the quality of life in Half Moon Bay.
Hi, I'm Kristalin Geith, the Chief Executive Optimist of the Half Moon Bay Coastside Chamber of Commerce. And 2023 was an amazing year for the Chamber. First, we're so excited that we get to partner with both the city and the county on the forthcoming Opportunity Center of the Coastside. And with that, we get to move into an awesome new building that brings us closer to the heart of Main Street, where it's easier for people to get to us, and we're so excited to help them. With that project, we were able to bring on Stephanie Perez, who is a born-and-bred local, and she is going to be running our business development coordination for the Opportunity Center and the Chamber. She is very happy to be with us, and she's going to do amazing things for our community. The other accomplishments that we had this year was lots of marketing opportunities were given to businesses, and we've been able to elevate existing businesses as well as our new businesses. We launched a brand-new website that we'd been working on for many years, coastside365.com, as the local resource to partner with our existing website, which was visithalfmoonbay.org. Visit Half Moon Bay is also going through rebranding, so we're excited for that to come. And we've had... And we've also had an exciting year in our advocacy efforts. So we've got to partner with the city on lots of initiatives, including minimum wage, and make sure that the businesses and the local community can come together and work together to better provide for our workforce. We're also very excited to be a part of Streetscapes, which is a city program that's going to really do wonderful things for Main Street. And we are helping to provide a sign on Highway 92 to get those 50,000 tourists to turn onto Main Street and visit our local downtown. So we look forward to a spectacular 2024 in our new location at 637 Main Street in the Opportunity Center of the Coastside. Come check us out.
Hi, my name is Annie Malli, and I'm the Branch Manager of the Half Moon Bay Library. Thank you so much for the opportunity to provide highlights of this year of resilience. We were honored to be able to support our community during these challenging times. The library was a place to meet with ESL tutors, to meet with case managers from La Costa, to meet with VA medical staff or street medicine field staff. The library was a place for people to learn yoga, tai chi, take a painting class, sing with their children, doing a storytime, a place for people to learn to paint, to learn to sew, to learn to use our maker resources. The library is a place to borrow a wide variety of resources. People can borrow bikes, can borrow sewing machines, they can borrow county park passes, state park passes, they can borrow computers, Wi-Fi hotspots. This year, we added blood pressure cuffs and karaoke machines. This year, we celebrated the five-year anniversary of the Half Moon Bay Library. All that we're able to offer to our community is because of this amazing resource that we have, this flexible, wonderful space that is such a gift to the community. As much as we love this building, library staff made a commitment to get out in the community. You would find us at all the local food distributions, the community meals, at local preschools and schools, at any community events like Make It Main Street. We continue to expand our e-resources, including New York Times, Wall Street Journal, and the Financial Times. We offer the Calm app for free if people are interested in meditation resources. We offer Coursera and LinkedIn Learning for people looking for jobs. And if you're interested in creativity, we offer Creative Bug for people to learn a variety of craft projects. And that's just to name a few. It has been a challenging year, but our community is resilient. I'd like to thank the city of Half Moon Bay, the county of San Mateo, and all of our community partners for their support. I would like to thank our devoted volunteers and library staff for all that they offer to the community. We look forward to 2024 and all of the new opportunities that will come.
Thank you for that video. I have seen more of myself than I really wanted to see. But it's okay. It's okay. We all get old and ugly, and it's just part of life, right? I don't know why I said that. I'm a little nervous because I'm supposed to make remarks. And I think after all that I've said, I've just been speaking for half an hour practically, there's not a whole lot more I can say. I wanted to say one or two things. This year has been a year where the community that comes to city council meetings has made a difference. And I can't tell you how important that's been to see the folks who come every week, every single city council meeting, and say the same thing every time they come: "We need housing." It's been so important because the council has taken that seriously, and we have done everything in our power to make sure that we can... Everything we can do about housing is being done. I want to say a special thanks to city staff who's been phenomenal in supporting city council and in supporting this town. They're out there among the community members having conversations. They are totally available. Whenever they're called upon, they are ready to take up that phone or email or meet someone in person to discuss whatever the issue might be. Being the mayor has been difficult this year because it was a very challenging year. But I can't tell you how much I learned from my fellow councilmembers. Councilmember Robert Brownstone has brought so much to the table. He and I disagree off and on. We agree most of the time, but I always want to hear what he has to say because it's thoughtful, it's informed, and it makes me think and rethink my position. Councilmember Harvey Rarback brings heart to our council. He cares, and you know he cares. And he cares about things that are very important to me. Councilmember Debbie Reddick has been my mentor. She's the one that got me to run for council initially, and she's taught me everything I know, the good stuff and the bad stuff. It's been fun. And the council this year has been responsible for working with the rest of the community to get elected our very first Latino council member. This is a real milestone, and it's one that we all need to be proud of. I am especially proud of it and proud of whatever part I had in getting you elected because it was critically important to me that you be here. I also want to say a special thanks to Ray Mueller, who is our County Board of Supervisors representative, and he's here this evening. And I want to thank him for all that he's done to help the city and to help the Coastside in general become... Yeah. I also want to shout out for Rebecca Albin, our local sheriff, and Christina Corbus, our county sheriff. They are working with us, and they are working for us. And I know I've forgotten a bunch of other people, our translators, our TV people. Everybody has been wonderful. And I'm going to stop saying anything right now because I've said enough. We are moving on to selection of the mayor and vice mayor for the year 2024.
Mayor Penrose, just before we get to that item, Vice Mayor Jiménez has something to present to you.
Okay.
Well, we, the Council, the Half Moon Bay City Council, have something for you. You have been an inspiration to us, especially to me. It is an honor to be here right next to you. We've had this conversation for several years. I remember going back and forth. Joaquín, Joaquín, Joaquín. It was like already in my dreams. And finally, the decision, you know, came where I decided to join you and to join our city council or city staff, who I'm very grateful with. And today, I'd like to give you this as a recognition for all your hard work, your dedication to our community. This is just... I don't have enough words to say, you know, how grateful I am for everything.
It's not a real gavel, but if I work at it, I could probably get it removed and get to use it. We are now moving on. And the order of business is to elect our mayor and vice mayor for this next calendar year. I would like to nominate for the position of mayor 2024, Joaquín Jiménez. May I have a roll call, please?
We do need a second, first.
Second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Councilmember Brownstone?
Something wrong?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarback?
Absolutely, yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jiménez?
Yes.
Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you. This message will be bilingual, in Espanol and English, in Spanish and English. I grew up watching westerns. I grew up watching westerns, so I like to shoot from the hip. Came in over the timing. You know, I just recently had a long drive by myself to reflect pretty much who we are in Half Moon Bay. And today, we're talking about resiliency, about everything that's happened in the last three years, pretty much. Starting October 2019, actually, you know, one of our nurseries that employed more than 200 workers, you know, they shut their doors. That's where everything started. Five months after that, you know, COVID hit our community. It was talking about timing. It was during that time. Because of the work that was being done here in the community, he was a nonstop. He was a nonstop. You know, that I decided, I made the decision to throw my hat in the ring, 2020 during the pandemic. It could have been any other year, but what I saw in the community, your community coming together, and I saw, I was not the only one. Many others saw that we, the city of Half Moon Bay, the community of Half Moon Bay was ready to have a Latino, a Mexican council member. And that was our campaign. It's time. I've learned a lot. I have great role models, mentors, here sitting with me in the chairs, in the community. I've had the opportunity to work with a lot of you. And all of us, we have the same, the same goal, to better serve our community. Why not be part of this? Everything we have accomplished together, everything. This year alone, we just talking about the floods, the shooting, resiliency, changing our community to be better. I wanted to be part of this. It was a perfect timing. And I look forward to continue to serve as the mayor of Half Moon Bay, as I have as the vice mayor and as a council member, together with my colleagues, my mentors, that I'm very grateful for, the community, community members. Just so you know, being from Half Moon Bay, I don't actually represent Half Moon Bay. I think I've been put on a task to represent the whole coast. I don't know why, but that's what it is. You know, it gives me the opportunity to be able to represent the coast, to be able to work with a good friend of mine like Ray, to get things done. Things are not easy. We think, you know, sitting here is like, it's a lot of work. I have had the opportunity to see a lot of things happen. We have our new elected chair, Christina Corpus, that I'm very grateful that she's in that position, you know, a person that I love working with, that I respect very My priorities to Half Moon Bay have been the same from day one. Housing for community, to have a safe and healthy community, to collaborate, to partner up with the local organizations, the local communities, or neighboring cities. We have the mayor of Pacifica here joining us today. Tiger, good to see you. Thank you. It's just, it's a blessing. It's a blessing to, you know, to be part of this, you know, making history, you know, creating a new community, an inclusive community, a welcoming community. That's who we are, and I hope to continue that. Not for me, where's the little kid running around? But it's for them, you know, the families. We have to open up the path for them, you know, to feel safe, to grow up, to have opportunity for them to become the next leaders. That's what we are. That's what we do. So now, who wants to translate that into Spanish? It's already been done. Víctor, muchísimas gracias. Nicolás, muchísimas gracias, pero ahí va en español. Va de nuevo. Dicen que el buen labrador hace un da, así que vamos a segundar ahora en el segundo idioma. Durante mi tiempo aquí, la campaña, la actora Penrose, Mayor Penrose, al alcalde of Half Moon Bay, siempre hablamos sobre Joaquín cuando era hora de postularme. Vivo en una comunidad que lo máximo, que adoro. Ya si no tengo aquí 37 años cumplidos en esa comunidad. Todo comenzó en el 2019 con algo que nos dolió mucho, el cierre de una de las nurciadas de Half Moon Bay creó una inseguridad para nuestros trabajadores. El trabajo de la pandemia me hizo ver durante 2020 que la comunidad de Half Moon Bay ya estaba preparada para tener un concejal latino, un concejal mexicano, que conociera lo que está sucediendo en la comunidad y que llevar ese mensaje, no solo acompañado. He tenido la oportunidad de trabajar con la comunidad, con los mentores, modelos a seguir, a lo que son mis compañeros, que me han ayudado mucho a poder hacer el trabajo que hago ahora, y el poder continuar el trabajo que hago ahora. Aquí nada hace nadie solo. Nadie lo hace solo. Aquí todos los hacemos con el apoyo de ustedes. Nosotros solo llevamos el mensaje, nada más. Esto nos hace sentir parte de la comunidad y escucharlos. Aquí en Half Moon Bay se practica una cosa bien importante, la equidad y la democracia, de lo mejor. Ahora, mis compañeros y yo vamos a continuar, espero continuar sirviendo a la comunidad lo mejor posible. Mi amigo Ray Mueller, que está aquí del Condado de Salmateo, que hemos conversado de cómo mejorar nuestra comunidad. Nuestra sheriff, distinguida Cristina Corpus, a quien aprecio mucho. El trabajar con ella es algo que siempre estoy viendo, la comunidad salir adelante. Poder lograr, lo que hemos logrado ahorita no ha sido fácil, pero no lo hacemos para nosotros. Nada es para nosotros. Lo hacemos para poder abrir el camino a nuestras nuevas generaciones. Generaciones de líderes. Aquí parece que el más jovencito que está aquí es mi sobrino Diego, que está ahí atrás. Ahí está. Y eso es un gusto, es un honor, el poder servir aquí a la par de mis compañeros, que han sido mis mentores, me han ayudado a aprender, para mejor servir la comunidad. Quiero decirle a la familia, mi familia, que está aquí presente, amigos, compañeros, por su apoyo. I want to thank my family who's here, you know, my friends, colleagues, for all the support. City staff, but I'm very grateful to be able to work with you, that I appreciate very much, very grateful for our city staff. Los compañeros que hay de la ciudad, que estoy bien agradecido por trabajar con ellos. Y vamos adelante. We move forward for a better community. We are a resilient community moving forward. We are a strong community. We have built strong bonds among our community. Muchísimas gracias. Thank you very much. Ahora, ahora, now I would like to nominate a vice mayor for the city of Half Moon Bay. Nominar un vice alcalde para la ciudad of Half Moon Bay. It is an honor, es un honor nominar al concejal, to nominate councilmember Rabeck, Harvey.
Thank you, Joaquín.
I'll second.
I'll take a roll call.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Rabeck?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Mayor Jimenez?
Yes, it's an honor.
Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you. So now, we move to public forum. Today, we're not going to be taking any comments via Zoom. Everything will be done in person. Every comment will be done in person. We have the first person, Katrina.
Good evening. Congratulations to the new mayor and vice mayor. It's my great honor to be here tonight on behalf of Congresswoman Anna Eschew. And it's wonderful to see everybody. And I am here, I was actually going to speak just a little bit earlier to acknowledge the former mayor. And on behalf of Congresswoman Eschew, I'm here to thank you for your sophisticated and outstanding leadership during this very, very difficult year, as you so beautifully laid out in that video. She thanks the world of you. And as you know, she recently, in January, had Half Moon Bay added back to her district. And she was so honored to be part of this resiliency team with you, to be on the ground and work on all these crucial and important issues, farm worker housing, affordable housing, infrastructure, broadband. And so, thank you for your service, and she's looking forward to yet one more year. She's going to be in office for another year, and so she's looking forward to working with all of you on those issues. And I have a congressional certificate of recognition for you, former mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we have Ray Mueller.
Good evening. So first to former Mayor Penrose, this, as you talked about, this was a year full of challenges, and it really tested the resilience of the community. And what happened was the community rose to the occasion and was strong, but your leadership rose to the occasion, and your compassion and your grace led the community through incredibly difficult times. And you did so in such a way with honest and direct conversations that really challenged people to match that with honesty, both with intellectualism and with their ideals. And it was a beautiful thing to behold at the county, to watch that happen. And so, on behalf of the County of San Mateo, I'm here tonight to express our thanks to you, and we are so grateful for your leadership. And to Mayor Jimenez, you've made history tonight as the first Latino-Mexican mayor of Half Moon Bay. And your advocacy, I knew before you ran, your advocacy is fierce. I can't wait to see the legacy that you create this year and the impact that you have on the community. I can't wait to see the history that you create this year when you bring the community together, and we're very much looking forward to being a part of that. So congratulations to you both. And we have a proclamation from the board of supervisors congratulating you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Now, we have Martin Anaya.
Hi, everybody. Martin Anaya, Pacific Coast Television. Just want to congratulate outgoing Mayor Penrose and certainly echo what Ray just said about history being set here tonight. Kind of makes my Latino heart a little proud. And, but I got to tell you, you know, it's not just this year. When we, PCT sat down with the city in the beginning of 2020 to outline what we wanted to do with some new objectives and communications goals and support for the city, little did we know, right, what was going to happen. And while many of those plans have been put on hold, literally up until this moment, what I was able to witness was a city, a community, a city staff that have worked harder than ever and really go way, way, way far above and beyond the call of duty in spite of challenge after challenge, literally, that started in those first few months of 2020. And we've tried to exemplify that as well in our service and trying to meet the communications needs that are changing and that are still changing. Earlier this year, I was fortunate enough to be at the 93rd birthday of one Dolores Huerta, the matriarch of the United Farm Labor Movement. And it was so amazing to see her and to see her dedication and her devotion. And amidst all the challenges that the farm labor movement has suffered, and of course, the ones that we're talking about that have happened, you know, just this past year here locally. But, you know, they have a saying, sí se puede. Sí se puede. Yes, we can. Yes, we can. And that's what I've seen in your staff, that's what I've seen with this council, that's what I've seen with all the people in this room and all the people who have fought so hard to make this community better than it was, to come out of these challenging times with that word that you've used, resilience, mayor, resilience, and also the we can do spirit. So I just want to acknowledge that. And also the, the we can do spirit. So I just want to acknowledge that and I want to say thank you. Congratulations to outgoing Mayor Penrose and, uh, and also congratulations to the new mayor and to, to the city. Si se puede. Thank you.
Thank you. Gracias. Now we have Rocío Ávila.
So she's going to give her remarks, her comments, and then I'll go ahead and, and interpret afterwards.
Buenas noches a todos los presentes. Mi nombre es Rocío Ávila. Y hoy mi comentario va dirigido especialmente al ahora alcalde mayor, ahora alcalde Joaquín Jiménez. Perdón, estoy nerviosa. Le hablo desde mi, mi experiencia como campesina y líder comunitaria. Me gustaría felicitarlo por, por convertirse en el primer alcalde latino de Half Moon Bay. Junto con mucha gente, nosotros preparamos el campo y generamos las condiciones para poder elegir. Y generamos las condiciones para poder elegirlo a usted. Plantamos semillas de esperanza en las mentes y corazones de la comunidad y las nutrimos con trabajo. Saliendo adelante y acompañando a nuestros hijos para que sean personas de bien. Ahora que los frutos empiezan a salir, usted tiene la responsabilidad muy grande con todo Half Moon Bay. Pero quiero hablarle de la responsabilidad que usted tiene con nuestra comunidad latina. Y es la de mantenernos unidos y para que nuestras voces se escuchen. Nosotros dependemos de la buena cosecha para sobrevivir y crear un mejor futuro en nuestros hijos. Por eso le encomiendo su alcaldía a Dios y a la Virgen de Guadalupe para que su gobierno alce la voz de los más necesitados y mejore las condiciones de vida de todos. Muchas gracias y recuerde que la unión hace la fuerza y un pueblo unido jamás será vencido. También quiero agradecer a la exalcaldesa Deborah Penrose por su servicio a la comunidad durante su periodo de alcalde. Muchas gracias.
So good evening to everyone here that are present. My name is Rocío Ávila and my comment for tonight is directed especially to the now mayor, Joaquín Jiménez. And I think this is the part where she said, I'm a little bit nervous. So I'm talking to all of you from my experience as a farm worker and a community leader. I'd like to congratulate for becoming the first Latino mayor of Half Moon Bay. And along with many people, we all are preparing ourselves and we're preparing the fields. And we generate all of these conditions so that we were able to elect you. So we plant the seeds of hope in the minds and hearts of the community. And we nourish them with hard work and moving forward and in company with our children so that they too can become good people. Now that we start seeing the fruits of our labor, you have a great responsibility with Half Moon Bay. But I want to talk to you about that responsibility that you have within our Latino community. And it's that we need to remain united so that our voices can be heard. We depend on the good fruits to survive and and to believe that there is a better future for our kids, our children. For that reason, I put your leadership in the hands of God and Our Lady of Guadalupe so that your government can raise up the voices of the most needy and better living conditions for all. Thank you very much. And remember that unity creates strength. And with the community that's united, we will never be defeated. Thank you very much to outgoing mayor Deborah Penrose for your service to the community during a very difficult time. Thank you.
Muchas gracias, Rocío. Thank you. Now we have Myla Jiménez.
For those who don't know me, I am Joaquín's daughter. And I just want to say on behalf of me and my brother, we are so proud of you. Oh, not to cry. You have been an amazing role model and I can't wait to see all the great things you do. And we're so, so proud of you and I can't wait to see all the amazing and all the things you do for the community and all the things you've done for the community. And we're so proud of you.
Thank you, Myla. I love you too. And Joaquín, my boy, I love you. Now we have a really good friend, Crystalin.
Crystalin Geet, the chief executive optimist of the COSI Chamber. So first of all, as this year closes, I want to give a big thank you to the whole of the council. Baby agrees that this year has been really, really hard, but you guys have done a really great job. And I personally am so thankful that I get to work with you on a daily basis and with city staff who are so amazing. For those who don't know, usually chambers in cities are actually fairly adversarial and butt heads a lot. And we have such a wonderful collaborative relationship and we work on so many things to bring all sides to an issue to make sure that where we end up is somewhere that everybody can try to live with. And that's special. So thank you so much. And to outgoing Mayor Penrose, thank you for your leadership. You've been just a real wonderful person to work with and bounce ideas off and see it. All the crazy meetings that we go to, it's just been really wonderful. And to incoming mayor Jimenez, I just want to say, I called it. So in 2019, January, well, December of 2018, I had only been here for two months I'd been in my job. And I was tasked with deciding who is our role model of the year for the chamber awards for 2019. And I said, well, there's this guy and I see him all the time and he's doing all this good work. And he just really seems passionate about the community and the people that he represents. And even if people don't know he represents them, he represents them with such just passion and caring and he stands up. And so when I brought it to our chamber board of that time to say, I think Joaquín would be our role model of the year. There were some questions and we really talked it through and I said, at the end of the day, if I had kids, I would want them to look up to Joaquín and that's what I think this award is for. And I'm just so excited to see you here and I don't know why I'm crying. You started it. And thank you so much for everything that you guys do. 2024 is going to be freaking fantastic. All right.
Thank you, Crystalin. Thank you. That was our last comment. Thank you, everybody, for your, for your comments. Now we move to the consent calendar. May I have a motion?
I move that we adopt the consent calendar, including items 1A, wave reading of resolutions and ordinances. Item 1B, warrants for the month of August 2023. Item 1C, warrants for the month of September 2023. Item 1D, warrants for the month of October 2023. Item 1E, AB 1600, report on development impact fees for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2023. And item 1F, 2024 calendar of city council meetings.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 This brings us to the end of our meeting. Thank you. Please stay back. We have in a few refreshments ceremony to recognize our outgoing mayor and incoming mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Harvey, and our vice mayor. Meetings adjourned.